Please rise. Before the pledge today, and purposely before the pledge, we're going to take a moment of silence to remember and revere the 2,000 977 human beings who were murdered by terrorists eighteen years ago tomorrow. They died in New York City, Arlington, Virginia, and Shanksville, Pennsylvania. Have a moment of silence. Very well, let's proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberties and justice for all.
Thank you all. Is there a motion for approval? I'm sorry, roll.
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Here.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Gray? Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Tracus?
President?
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have a quorum.
Very well, is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of September 3, 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The September 3, 2019 Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this morning, so we will proceed with other communications.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this morning, so we will move to other communications. Under Other Communications, Item Number One, First District.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number Two, Third District.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item Number Three, Fourth and Second Districts.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number Four, Sixth District.
Receive file, and the change of owner be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number Five, Sixth District.
Receive file, and hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item Number Six?
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item Number Seven?
Receive file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number Eight, All Districts.
Receive file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number Nine?
Receive file, and the issuance of the request for proposal be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item Number Ten?
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item Number Eleven?
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item Number Twelve, First, Fourth, and Second Districts.
Receive file, and the county council will be prepared to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number Thirteen, Fifth District.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item Number Fourteen?
Receive file, and the issuance of the request for proposal be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we would typically have the report of the county executive, but I spoke with Dr. Page this morning and yesterday, and he's at a very important meeting as we speak with the governor and other leaders regarding policing and security in the St. Louis region. So we're going to defer his report. He assures me that he will be here, and we will hear from him probably later in the agenda, either after perfection of bills or perhaps after final passage.
For special committees.
Yeah, so with Ethics Committee, we'll go ahead and continue to hold that on the order of business, and that will be the order.
This morning, we have six speakers.
Very well, when you are called, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. As is our rule here, each speaker has three minutes, and we will grant you some grace on that, but I would appreciate, and I know that my colleagues will appreciate, your keeping your remarks as close to three minutes as possible. So with that, we will proceed.
Our first speaker this morning is Beth Wasserstrom.
Hello, my name is Beth Wasserstrom. I live at 9,500 Crockett Drive in Olivet. I'm a volunteer at the St. Louis County Pet Adoption Center. As you probably are already aware, both of our full-time vets have just resigned. The result of losing just one vet in 2018 was the death of close to an extra 140 animals when the shelter failed to act. Many of them after sitting in the shelter for months. So I'm here to ask that you ignore the notion that we are going to adequately get by this time, especially since we adequately get by with two full-time vets. Clearly, this is not common sense. I also beg you to consider immediately reallocating unused shelter salary funds for mobile surgical spay and neuter units like OPSPOT that can alter as many as 40 animals in a day. This can quickly move animals to the adoption floor and entice rescues to take more animals. We are currently bursting at the seams in the dog room, and we also have many sick animals. Two have unexpectedly died in the last couple days. In under two weeks, we will most likely have to euthanize animals for space. We have been in this cycle now for the third time in my almost two and a half years there. If, like before, the truth in needing to euthanize animals for space will again be hidden, volunteers will start sunshining records, and Tuesday night will start getting very long for all of us. So out of respect for everyone's time, I'd like to suggest we do something we have never done before, and that's have a shelter town hall meeting for staff, volunteers, and communities to attend with the purpose of starting to put everyone on the same page. Number two, we require transparency in reporting and post that the numbers weekly in the shelter and take ownership of them. If we are horrified by the numbers, then work together to change them. Number three, set immediate rescue, length of stay, and adoption goals. My other main purpose today is to publicly thank one of our volunteers, Jenny Agnew, for her incredible contributions to our shelter. Jenny will be sadly stepping away indefinitely. She passionately spoke many times before this council and tirelessly poured her heart and soul into saving our animals. In November 2018, to find all logic, Ms. Utz ceased the marketing of our animals. Jenny, who was a newer volunteer, immediately began taking photographs and creating clever posts on our nonprofit Facebook page. She is a college professor, a professional writer, a talented photographer, and instantly developed a following that spotlighted the very best in our animals. To those animals and to us, Jenny is truly a hero because so many would not have made it out alive without her. Not only has she carried the entire shelter marketing for over a year, she volunteered close to 25 hours per week walking dogs. When we had no rescue coordinator for seven months, she stepped up to help with that as well. And each Sunday night, the volunteers eagerly look forward to help her weekly wrap-up videos celebrating our adoptions and rescues.
That's three minutes, Mr. President.
If that isn't enough, I believe she fostered nine of our dogs who were marked for euthanasia. And Snoop and Ivory are currently with her. She helped raise thousands of dollars. To put into perspective, the Oliver posts about a month ago, Ms. Daly, the county social media rep appeared here and spoke about the new marketing program county was implementing. In approximately 30 days that followed, Jenny created 147 marketing posts with 200 pictures, and county posted two. In summary, no one will fill her shoes. As we search for a new director, one of my biggest hopes is we can finally find someone to engage and embrace the talents of people around them like Jenny and see them as partners and not as a constant threat.
Thank you, Ms. Wasserstrom.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Presiding Officer, last week I questioned county executive Page about the things he said in regard to the Metro Transit Agency. Some things Mr. Page says regarding some issues do not seem to be particularly well thought out. That would include his remarks on ByState. The main concern of Mr. Page is the change in the Illinois representation. The Illinois side will now have four seats for St. Clair County, and Madison County would have one. County Executive claims this will create an imbalance, and St. Clair County will now have veto power. That's true, but they have already had veto power a lot of the time. So has St. Louis. So has St. Louis County. So has Madison County. Have they used the veto? Not that I have seen. An essential feature of the ByState compact, this governing document, is that both the Missouri or Illinois delegation on the Board of Commissioners have veto power. It's been that way from the beginning. Mr. Page was also quoted in the August 27 Post-Dispatch as saying "The change with St. Clair County is not what St. Louis County voters agree to or signed up for." What is he referring to? I have no idea. I've also asked the county executive in his office if anyone from his staff has attended board and committee meetings at ByState since he became county executive. No response. As I said last week, the big issue with the Metro Transit Agency is whether it is serving the people who are dependent on public transit to get the jobs, get the school, get the workshops, go shopping, et cetera. Does never seem to be of much concern to Mr. Page. I will also say again, the council really needs to have an auditor or accounting officer to monitor metro operations and finances, especially considering the huge amounts of county tax dollars go into the transit agency. Things are far too complicated for this council to oversee metro by yourselves. In 2015, the council approved $3 million for the loop trolley from public transit funds. Yet the trolley has nothing to do with public transit. It's a novelty ride. For the $3 million, the council could have hired an auditor for 30 years. Thank you, Mr. Tracus.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Next speaker is Arne Deanoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deanoff, a state and county public advocate. And the first thing that I'd like to speak about is the smoking ordinance. Last week, I saw a county police security officer smoke within 15 foot of the building. He was more like three or four feet of the building. And I did some homework. I also saw him litter his cigarette butt on the sidewalk in front of the county building when there was a child going by in a car with his parent. Bad, poor judgment, bad unprofessionalism, ethics, and teaching that children some bad manners. Now, the smoking ordinance, the county no smoking ordinance, a citizen-firm referendum, was passed by a huge volume of county residents that opposed smoking and wanted a no-smoking ban. In the city of Clayton, ordinance number 215.680 states in every building in the city of Clayton and posted prominently at the front door, and it states, "No smoking within 15 foot of any building." This officer was clearly out of bounds, clearly not doing his job. He was clearly in uniform, on the payroll, because he stood to my right. Not this officer to my right here today, but the officer stood to my right at the last county council meeting. Hopefully, the police chief who finally showed up to a county council meeting in over a month will take note and clean his own house. As I've stated, there's numerous county police officers that are doing mischief and wrongdoing, and they need to be investigated by Internal Affairs, the FBI, and the U.S. Attorney's Office. The second thing I'd like to bring up is Ms. Dunaway, the new county council member. I listened to your interview on NPR yesterday, and I want to hear the more details. But I like your ideas about having a conversation and in-depth details about diversity, about understanding, about women, discriminatory practices in county government, inclusion, equity, and fairness. I think they're very important, and I would encourage all the county council members to listen to Ms. Dunaway's in-depth interview on NPR's website. Finally, the police officers. There were four police, five police officers last year that had drunk while driving and were pulled over by numerous agencies throughout the region, and one in O'Fallon, Illinois. Four of them is, two of the officers, I believe, were fired. Four of them, or I'm sorry, two of them have resigned on their own accord, and there's still one remaining who's a detective. Catherine Simmons is currently on the payroll. She made a deal in the city of Creve Court, and she wanted to have special considerations, entitlement, and special treatment. I take DUI very seriously, and it's like driving around with a loaded gun to see whose family you can intrude or ruin. It's about no-hall, it's about no-how, money, and a connected attorney who got her off in the city of Creve Court. And I don't think that this person should be employed by the county because it doesn't set a good example for the community, children, or families. And when somebody else gets DUI, it just doesn't make any sense. Finally, there was a suit that was filed by the former St. Louis City Police Chief's daughter, Moqua. She filed a suit against the county and U.S. District Court about having no medical treatment after breaking your leg for over 24 hours. Mr. County Executive, that is inconceivable. That is unfortunate that we let a human being in your custody go without medical treatment for more than 24 hours. And I hope that there's an internal investigation looking into these allegations, and I hope it doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deanoff.
Next speaker is Hannah Mungamuri.
Hi, I am Hannah Mungamuri. And I thank the council for the time. American Medical Association has urged people to avoid the use of e-cigarette products until health officials could further investigate and understand the cause of lung illnesses across the country. And I plead that medical marijuana would be banned or at least stayed until further investigation is done because its addictive harm is a lot more than the CBD oils. And currently, only seven states have totally decriminalized marijuana. And I pray and I hope that all the states would be non-marijuana states. We had slave states and free states before, and it didn't work. It's like saying the portion of this room is non-smoking, and the rest is smoking. It doesn't work. I mean, it will raise revenues for a while, but it is deceiving ourselves. So I pray that further investigation would be done on this medical marijuana, which even good medical doctors refuse to dispense in the hospitals. Voters might be, I don't know, induced or seduced into voting for it, but still, we have a medical doctor as the executive. Nobody can fool him. So I please pray that this medical marijuana would be looked into and strictly scrutinized before more deaths occur. I mean, such changes have come within the American society for the good of all the people. Before, like slavery, you banned slavery, which was like voted into being legalized, you know? But then, because it didn't work, you banned it. But we still have slaves in India. They do all this like beautiful handiwork, little children, 80-year-old, 10-year-old girls. They're still slaves. I'm saying like, we shouldn't come over here and change your healthier laws to accommodate our unhealthy laws. Like, this 18-year-old widow was burnt alive because of caste laws in 1987. And these two little children of white Australian, they were burnt in 1999. I mean, things like that are still going on, so I please, and marijuana is not just medical and recreational. It's a religious thing in India. It's a caste law. And our laws are being repackaged into changing your healthier laws. So I please plead everyone in this room to do whatever you can to stop this medical marijuana. I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Mungamuri.
Next speaker is Shelley Burris.
Good morning. Shelley Burris, Oakville, 63129. You know, I'm echoing Ms. Mungamuri's comments, actually, but I'll eventually pass over to the council two articles. One is them, one of them originates out of New Jersey, and it has to do with the legislature not having much progress passing or marijuana laws there because they're arguing about mainly the form. And one of them is gummy bears. People have realized these are very attractive to children. It has happened in other states. They're getting into them. They're ending up in the emergency room. And we're talking little kids, you know, preschool, early grade school. I think when I heard the Planning Commission talk about the original facilities and what they produce, he mentioned gummy, gummy candies and so forth. I realize this may not be the setting to be talking about this, but the whole the whole industry is pretty alarming and what it can do to our neighborhoods and the citizens. The other one is it's an article specifically about Colorado, really talking about the downside of what has happened to them. And they quote a woman, she's an M.D. Her name is Karen Randall. She's an emergency room physician, and she is talking about how many people come into the emergency room, adults, children. She says the average joint in Colorado contains 20 milligrams of THC. That's 10 times as much as the average joint at Woodstock. The concentrated products, they go by the name of Shatter there, if you've not heard that. So anyway, so pass that on. I did want to congratulate the council, though, for continuing to have the hearings and being allowed to speak about this. And I think it's really a just and important thing that the citizens do get a chance to weigh in, which some of the earlier stages, you know, we didn't get a chance. So hopefully, your vote, I believe it's today, will be for the 1,000 feet. You will keep that. It's, I think it's so important. And this council is looking out for what's left of our unincorporated St. Louis County. So as a former teacher and longtime resident of the area, I'd like to see good things happen. So, or, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burris.
Our final speaker today is Erin Kelly.
Hello, my name is Erin Kelly. I live at 12981 Baalbeck Drive. Thank you so much for having me today, and I just wanted to congratulate you all on a couple of things. It sounds like a really important bill, a public health bill, is about to be voted on that would require hospitals to report non-fatal overdose tests. You have recently approved a really strengthened tobacco legislation for our county area. You're doing a lot of great work. It's really putting protections in place for the 219,000 kids that live in your community. So thank you so much. I've been here to speak about the 1,000-foot buffer that you should be voting on today. And again, just want to encourage you to put that protection in place for our kids. It's a really great opportunity for us to do this before marijuana continues to expand in our area. Our group is not against legalization of it. We just want to make sure our kids aren't exposed to it constantly. So that 1,000-foot would help with that action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. That concludes public forum. Before we proceed with introduction of bills, a note for the record that the county executive has arrived. And with that, we'll hear from the county executive.
Thank you, Arne, and thanks for your patience with my scheduling conflicts this morning. County government involves a lot more than the eight of us sitting up here. It includes more than 500 people who serve on our 74 boards and commissions. Of those 500 positions, about half are serving on unexpired terms, and about 100 are vacant. This is not where we want to be. The longtime county employee who oversaw boards and commissions left shortly after my predecessor resigned. And for the last five years, very little has been done. Conventional wisdom is that you leave people on unexpired terms so you can extract power from them. And that may be why my predecessor did not actively replace appointees who were serving beyond their terms. But I want to be absolutely clear. It's not my plan to leave people in expired terms to manipulate votes. I simply won't do that. What I am doing is judiciously seeking qualified ethical people who have the best interest of county and its residents in mind. I appreciate Councilman Fitch's proposal and the concerns he has expressed. I sponsored similar legislation regarding the port authority, and I share concerns about good government. But keeping these positions current and filled is a Herculean task, one we must take on as a result of a five-year leadership failure. To successfully fill these positions, I need the help of good people, including all of you. Among the boards that has members serving on expired terms is the St. Louis County Housing Authority. As you know, my staff and I have been working diligently to come up with a solution to the Wellston public housing crisis. I refused to sign off on a HUD plan that would have destroyed 200 housing units. As a result, HUD said in mid-July that they would wait 120 days for an alternative plan. And my staff and I have met with leaders and experts in affordable housing. We've had numerous conversations and meetings with Congressman Lacy Clay and State Senator Brian Williams. And we will soon bring Councilwoman Rida Days into these discussions and be directly involved. The process has not been easy. We continue to get mixed signals from HUD on the level of cooperation we will receive when we bring forward a proposal. We will continue to work toward the HUD imposed deadline. Along the way, we will regularly update residents of Wellston and the public on this important human rights issue. The destruction of housing just because HUD wants out of the public housing business is just not the right path forward. We cannot expect some of our most vulnerable residents to be handed a voucher and sent off with a goodbye and good luck attitude. This is a scenario that I will never buy into. Meanwhile, we continue to look at funding options and partnerships we can forge to ensure the Wellston residents can stay in the community that they want to live in. We should not have to stave off the destruction of homes with too many people who sometimes care more about the wishes of HUD than the people of Wellston. So I've said this before, and it bears repeating. My administration is going to take on the tough issues, issues that were ignored for too long, and this is one of them. Another one of those is creating a culture of transparency. When we can, we must hand over documents that are requested from the public and from the media. If there is a question on whether a county record should be released, I urge disclosure over closure. Lawyers under the leadership of our new county counselor are reviewing sunshine law policy and making real strides in knocking down a perceived wall of secrecy. For example, on August 30, we handed over 5,400 pages of material and a video to the attorney for Tashonda Troop, whose son Lamar Catching died in our corrections center. We also have uploaded all correction medicines policies to the county website, and we're working on the policies of the Department of Justice Services. This part should be completed in two weeks. We also plan to post on our website a complete list of those who are charged with handling public records requests in each department. This will help the public know who is the best person to ask for information. We are looking how to open, looking at the open records process and currently working to make sure that we have enough staff and the right staff in the right place to handle all the requests that come in. We'll keep on tackling the tough issues. This afternoon, I've asked the security consultants from WSP to brief the county council on a system-wide security assessment of Metrolink. That meeting is at 2:00 p.m. and should provide us with more details as we continue to take a deep look at ByState's budget. The agency has requested more than $164 million from the county for proposing cuts to services that disproportionately reduce services in St. Louis County. And this is a troubling combination when ridership continues to drop and riders are worried about their safety. This meeting, this hearing this afternoon, is open to the public. Thank you, Arne.
Thank you, Sam, and thank you for making sure that the public hears from the county executive, making, squeezing this in your very, very busy schedule.
Mr. County Executive, I would say thank you very much for addressing the board and commission issue. And I think that's a very positive step. And what I would like to do with my legislation is continue to hold that until I, we see that that those replacements are going to be named, and I'm sure we'll all be happy to submit some nominees for you. Uh, the second thing that I would like to say is apparently you have a meeting this afternoon at three-thirty, uh, according to the media, a crime summit meeting in the city?
Yeah, there's, um, there's a meeting, uh, with, uh, Governor and the St. Louis City leadership and our leadership to talk about how we can work together on, uh, crime as a regional problem.
Okay. And is that a public meeting as well?
No, that is not a public meeting.
Okay.
Uh, the only thing that I- But we do, we do, uh, plan, at least I know the governor plans on a media response afterwards, and, um, we'll certainly follow his lead on this. This is a very, uh, important topic for the region.
And I'm hoping that on our behalf, or at least my behalf, that you can express to city leadership, uh, during that meeting that it's not helpful for city-elected officials to attack their police officers when they're doing the right thing.
Amen.
So, um, I think that's bad, um, for addressing a crime issue in the city, and I think she needs to hear that, Marilyn, person needs to hear that from us as well. So thank you.
Thanks.
Very well, let's, uh, proceed with, um, introduction of bills.
Bill number two fifty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Columbia Capital Management, LLC for financial advisory services. Bill number two fifty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of one million, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars from the unappropriated balance of the Special Road and Bridge Fund for acquisition of eleven road maintenance vehicles. Bill number two fifty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of four hundred and forty thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the Park Maintenance Fund for purchase of three road maintenance vehicles for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Mr. Presiding Officer, that is all the bills.
Very well, let's proceed with perfection of bills.
Bill number twenty, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Bill twenty, hold this, give me, hold on, Bill twenty. Bill number twenty is held.
Bill number two fifty, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number two fifty. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number two fifty is perfected.
Bill number two fifty-one, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number two fifty-one. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill two fifty-one is perfected.
Bill number two fifty-two, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move for perfect Bill number two fifty-two.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number two fifty-two is perfected.
Bill number two fifty-three, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move to perfect Bill number two fifty-three. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number two fifty-three is perfected.
Bill number two fifty-four, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number two fifty-four. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number two fifty-four is perfected.
Bill number two fifty-five, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move to perfect Bill number two fifty-five. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number two fifty-five is perfected.
Bill number two fifty-six, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move to perfect Bill number two fifty-six. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number two fifty-six is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number two twenty-four, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number two twenty-four.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill two twenty-four, we have seven ayes.
Bill number two twenty-four is finally passed.
Bill number two forty-one, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number two forty-one. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill two forty-one, there are seven ayes.
Very well, Bill number two forty-one is finally passed.
Bill number two forty-two, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number two forty-two. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill two forty-two, there are seven ayes.
Bill number two forty-two is finally passed.
Bill number two forty-three, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of Bill number two forty-three.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill two forty-three, there are seven ayes.
Very well, Bill number two forty-three is finally passed.
Bill number two forty-four, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move for final passage of Bill number two forty-four.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill two forty-four, there are seven ayes.
Bill number two forty-four is finally passed.
Bill number two forty-five, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number two forty-five. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill two forty-five, there are seven ayes.
Bill number two forty-five is finally passed.
Bill number two forty-six, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number two forty-six. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill two forty-six, there are seven ayes.
Bill number two forty-six is finally passed.
Bill number two forty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for final passage of Bill number two forty-seven.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill two forty-seven, there are seven ayes.
Bill number two forty-seven is finally passed.
Bill number two forty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number two forty-eight. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Clan- Dunaway.
Aye.
Excuse me. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill two forty-eight, there are seven ayes.
Bill number two forty-eight is finally passed.
Bill number two forty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number two forty-nine. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Before I cast my vote, I want the public to know that this, it appears we're at the end of the road of a couple months-long conversation about this issue. Um, I appreciate everyone who's weighed in. Um, I do support a buffer zone, um, however, I, I think a thousand feet is too restrictive, um, both from an economic development perspective, but more importantly, from the perspective of people who need to use this product as a medicine, and I am concerned that our conversation, um, missed the mark on that. Um, I was hoping we could forge a compromise and meet somewhere between where we are now and, um, what the original recommendation was from our Planning Commission, but that appears not to be the case, unfortunately. I vote no.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill two forty-nine, there are five ayes and two noes.
Bill number two forty-nine is finally passed.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have twelve resolutions this morning.
Ready motions?
Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmembers Walton Gray and Dunaway.
I move for the adoption of resolution number one.
Second.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Very well, motion carries, resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution number two through twelve, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move the adoption of resolutions two through twelve.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.